Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the October 6th, 2015 Post Falls City Council meeting. Clark will notice that -- note that all council members are present. And for the record, we started the evening with a five o'clock workshop presented by Dayfair Park and Recreation Director. Under ceremonies, announcement, appointments, and presentations, couple announcement first, city elections on November 3rd. There are three seats up for election. Meet the candidates on Wednesday, October 14th at 6:00 PM on a special broadcast on City Cable 97.103 and live in the council chambers. Again, October 14th at 6:00 PM. Post Falls Lions Haunted House is back for Halloween. The haunted house runs weekends through October from 6:00 PM until midnight, as well as Tuesday, October 27th through Thursday, October 29th from 6:00 PM until 10 o'clock PM. The Post Falls Park and Recreation Department is holding their second annual Shoes and Brews 5K Run and Beer Festival Saturday, October 17th at Kiwanis Park. Registration is required for this event. Councilor Hisong and I are going to do a tag team on that. He's running and I'm going to take care of the beer side of it, so. Thank you very much, Skip.
Is he running?
Yeah. Sorry, I couldn't pass it out.
I don't think so.
The city annual residential fall cleanup is scheduled for Saturday, October 24th. Post Falls sanitation will be doing a citywide pickup for one day only. Items must be placed at the street by 6:30 PM. Please check the city website for details on size and type of items they will pick And with that, we have a presentation from Avista. Please introduce yourself.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Josh Fort with Avista Utilities. Today I'm going to be talking to you about the Spokane River Horizontal Directional Drilling Project that we've got coming up, starting in a couple of weeks. So. Nope. Sorry. There it was. She told me how to work it, I just forgot. So basically, this project will install a new six-inch gas main, parallel to Spokane Street Bridge between Camelan Park on the south end and the water tower on the north end. For the presentation, I'll kind of go over why we're doing this, what the background is, the horizontal directional drilling, or HDD approach, and what that pertains, what that means to the public, as well as a milestone schedule on when you can start expecting to see stuff go on. So as far as questions, if we could hold them to the end, I think it'd probably go a little bit quicker. So why are we doing this? We've got a four-inch steel gas main that was installed on Spokane Street Bridge. It actually hangs from the underside of the bridge. It's been serving customers on the south side of the river since 1972. When it was originally installed in 1972, along with the bridge, the abutments, the interface between where the pipe goes from air to dirt was done in such a way that it's shown in the picture here, where we can't get in there and physically inspect the pipe. So we have to be able to unwrap the pipe to look at what the pipe looks like, or we have to be able to take readings on the soil to make sure that it is protected. And it's just done in a way that we can't do that. So Idaho Public Utilities Commission has been monitoring this for about the last five years, and a couple of years ago, they said, "We'd really like you to do something about this. Either make it so that you can inspect it, or replace it." So we've been looking at options for how we'd go about doing that. The two options that stuck out to us were installing a new pipe on the bridge, or boring a new pipe under the river. The new pipe on the bridge, we'd first, before we install the new pipe, we'd have to fix the underlying problem that we've got with the current one, which involves taking out structure at both ends of the bridge, which becomes a very intensive, costly project that basically shuts down the bridge, at least one lane, possibly two lanes, for a period of time, which is a big impact to the public. Horizontal directional drilling is something that we've been doing for a while. It is our preferred approach for going under a waterway, because it does not impact the public for the most part. We can get that down to just a few days of impact to the public. And cost is marginally more expensive upfront, but there's almost no ongoing maintenance to the, to the pipe once we get it under the, under the water. So versus on the bridge, we have to go and inspect it every three months, which is particularly hard on this particular bridge, because it's so close to the dam. We can't get a boat on the water six months out of the year to inspect our pipe. So that's another issue that the Idaho PUC is wanting us to remedy with this. So as far as an HDD approach, that's something that is not new to Avista. We had a project about seven years ago, about a mile upstream from this location, near Highway 95, where we did a very similar six-inch pipe under the Spokane River. Went very well. So, and we do a lot of this in Southern Oregon particularly. We've actually got a spot where we're doing five borings, all at the same time, right at the moment. So it's something that we do quite a bit of. It is the industry standard for getting utilities underwaterways, if you can do it. As far as this particular project, we will enter on the south side of the river, in Camelan Park. We will start with a pilot hole that goes about 20 to 30 feet under the river, and enters near the water tower. It'll be just south of the water tower on the north side of the park, or on the north side of the river. Once we get that pilot hole in, then there will be a series of reaming. Basically, we just go back and forth with a reaming drill to make the hole larger and larger, till we eventually get a 16-inch hole. And then, once we get a 16-inch hole, we can start pulling back the casing. So all of the drilling portion is the majority of the length of the project, and it actually is, is no impact to the public, or very small impact to the public. Noise is really the only impact that we would have, because it's just the drill operating in Camelan Park. Other than that, there's no traffic impact, there's, there's not a whole lot going on. The action's happening 30 feet below the water. Once we get the, the 16-inch hole under the water, and we're ready for pulling back the steel pipe, that's when kind of the more visible part of this happens, where we take 1,700 feet of steel pipe, and we'll string it out on the north side of the river, get it all welded together, so it makes basically one long 1,700-foot steel spaghetti noodle. And we will hook onto it with the bore machine that's on the south side of the river, use large equipment to lift it about 70 feet in the air, to get it lined up with our hole, and then the machine will pull it back through the hole. So that process, the welding of the pipe won't shut down any traffic along Spokane Street, or anything like that. It'll take a few days. Once we do get to the pullback portion, we'll need to shut down both lanes of Spokane Street. We've got a detour route that we detour around the construction, just mainly for safety. We can physically have cars in there, but not good to have pipes in the air and cars. So we'll detour around it, and that's expected to take a day. So typically, that'll be about 12 hours for doing the pullback, but once we start, we can't stop. So if things go well, it'll take eight hours, on schedules 12 hours, and then we go from there, but not typically longer than 24 hours. But at that point, we may have to work 24 hours a day, until we get that steel pipe pulled back in. Once we get the steel pipe in, then we're pretty well made. That's the bulk of the project, right there. We will go back through the center of the steel pipe, and hook onto a plastic pipe, pull a plastic pipe back, back through our steel pipe. The plastic pipe is actually what will be carrying the gas. And then after that, it's a pretty typical gas job, where we tie it in at each end, and do kind of some of the final cleanup work. As far as a schedule on this, in a couple of weeks, you could start to see materials moving in. Our staging location is on the west side of Spokane Street, in Liberty Bankers Open Field there. We may also be staging some equipment near Camelan Park in the meantime. Our drill rig is currently on a project in Southern California at the moment, and they're expected to start sending it up here around the week of the 26th, so we would expect to see it up here shortly after that. There may be some preparation that happens before that. Basically, they take wood, that's wood matting that lays down the entire park, so we don't do too much damage in the park. There will be some construction work that happens on the south side of the river, on Spokane Street, to get our main branched off and ready to tie in at the park. That'll be because we can't do the, once we get the pipe in, it'll be winter time, and we can't do asphalt work in the winter time, so that'll, that'll be done ahead of time. So as far as the actual, the pull-in part should happen around, that's the visible part to the public, and that should happen around the beginning of December, I would imagine. We should be pretty well wrapped up by mid-December. As far as the repairs in the park, and also on the north side, because we're going to be ending in mid-December, it's not really good for, for planting new seeds, or laying down sod. So as soon as the weather is, is good for it in the spring, around March 1st, we will go back and do a full repair in Camelan Park, laying down sod. We'll also be doing some stormwater drainage work for the Parks Department and the Engineering Department, that they were wanting to do anyway, and since we're going to be tearing up their park, figured it works. So as soon as we get done on the north side and the south side, it will be as good, or better than what we left it. You shouldn't be able to tell that we were in at all. And we'll have a pipe 30 feet under the water, that should be fairly maintenance-free for the next 100-ish years, so.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
So you're having a difficult time inspecting the pipe, because it's on the bridge right now.
Yes.
How do you inspect and/or monitor a pipe that is 30 feet under the river?
Well, the, so the plastic pipes don't actually require the, there's, there's really nothing to inspect. So there's a steel casing, and there's really nothing to inspect on a casing. If it were a steel pipe just under there, then we would do readings on it, to tell whether our cathodic protection was working, but there's really nothing, nothing to check. Yes, sir.
Are there any major risks to this whole operation?
Primary risk is actually not making the bore. So that is really a function of the geology that we've got under the river, which is not ideal. So we do have some gravels, and cobbles, and boulders. The contractor that we're using for this is the largest on the west coast, with one of the newest and most advanced drill rigs on the west coast. So that will help us, as well as we're having a third-party consultant that Avista's hiring, that works for the Army Corps of Engineers, just traveling around the world, doing bore projects. So with that, we're hoping that that mitigates our risk of not making the bore. That is the primary risk. Anytime you do hydraulic drilling, there is a pressure inside that hole. There's always a chance for an inadvertent return, but we're also monitoring pressures inside the hole, and volumes of mud going in and out, so we do a balance there, and make sure that everything's accounted for. But there is a risk of, basically, if you have cobbles and gravels, it's kind of like marbles in a jar, and you're putting pressure on the bottom, so you can get seepage through the top to the bottom of the river. So we've got contingency plans in place for, we'd be able to notice it well ahead of time, and contingency plans on, on if it, if we think that it might be happening, what we do.
Any other questions?
I have, I have one on.
Go ahead.
Um, there, there is so much talk on that river about the pilings, and even pulling the pilings out, and the Department of Waterways, and all of those entities don't want that soil to be disturbed. And so, did you need a license to do this, or what was the process?
So in order to do this, we had to get a, an easement from the Idaho Department of Lands, as well as an encroachment permit. So the encroachment permit is what allows us to do that. They go out to Army Corps of Engineers, Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, EPA, nearby landowners, Post Falls Highway District, anybody that is a, kind of a key stakeholder on it, and let them know, "Hey, Avista has asked us if they can do this. What are your thoughts and concerns?" And then we respond to any questions that might come up. Primarily, the, the reason that they don't want to pull any pilings out is because it disturbs the, the bottom, and that whole area is technically Bunker Hill Superfund Site.
I live right there, and I didn't know anything about this, till I got it in my packet, so that's interesting.
Okay. Yeah, so heavy metals on the bottom of the river, which is one of the reasons that, so the horizontal directional drilling, HDD, has emerged as the leading method for installing utilities in areas that are environmentally sensitive, because there really is no, we aren't digging up, you know, what we're doing shouldn't touch the bottom of the river. If we do get a, an inadvertent return that oozes up from the bottom, it's not something that really disturbs anything. It more encapsulates. And like I said, well before we even get to that, it's got 30 feet to go through, and we would notice, you know, when it got about five feet. And then we add mixtures and do things to, to stop that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Patty, good seeing you. Thanks for joining us, and glad you're down to one crutch, and look forward to when you're walking normal.
Hi, Patty.
Thank you very much. Good information. I think you got to sell tickets and use it as a fundraiser, that, that will be enjoyable to see.
It will be interesting to see.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Are there any declarations of conflict? I'm sorry, are there any amendments to the agenda first?
There are none tonight, sir.
Thank you. Now are there any declarations of conflict? Seeing none, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the September 15th, 2015 city council meeting. Item B is payable September 8th through September 28th, 2015. Item C is annexation agreement for the Smalley Annexation File A-15-01. Item D is the Avista Spokane River Gas Line Bore Utility and Construction Easement Agreement Grant of Easement, Temporary Construction Easement. Item E is authorization to advertise for 154 acres of city-owned farm ground for competitive proposals. Item F is engineering services contract with Welch Comer &amp; Associates to develop plans and specification for a sewer lift station and a sewer force main. Item G is a new alcohol license request from Up North Distillery, located at 846 North Boulder Court. Item H is Black Bay Park Survey Frame and Smentana Professional Services Agreement. Item E is employment contract for legal services director Warren Wilson, who has joined us tonight. So for those who have not had an opportunity to meet him, he will come up and introduce himself after the council meeting. Item J is wastewater capitalization fee agreement with Donald Smock for $1,596 East Salty Sway. Item K is 2016 health insurance renewal with Regions Blue Shield. And Theresa has worked very hard on this, and gotten us very competitive rates with Blue, with Regions, to continue on with the same insurance proposal. Item I is a senior center lease.
Any questions? Carrie.
I would like to HIJKL. I think I, it's item L.
Oh, sorry, that was L.
Could, could we pull that off of the consent calendar? I just have a couple of questions on that.
Which one?
L, senior center lease. That's fine. Everybody concur?
Yes.
Okay. So it'd be the consent calendar minus...
Items A through K.
A through K.
Entertained a motion?
I move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
I amend that to remove item L.
And I'll second it.
Okay.
Motion second for the discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy.
Hi.
Henderson.
Hi.
Hisong.
Hi.
Wilhelm.
Hi.
Thorson.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi. We should pass it. Thank you very much, Warren. Thank you for joining us tonight. And please know, Mr. Cafferty, that we enjoy working with you, and that there's reasons this has occurred, and it's none of which pertain to what you've done. You've been great to work with, and we still get you for a while, so we look forward to that.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure, and I look forward to continuing on.
Thank you very much.
In diminished capacity.
Public hearings, we have none tonight. Unfinished business, we have none. Next item up is citizens' issues, and it's, this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council relating, regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. If anyone cares to comment, please come forward and give us your name for the record. Mr. Seer.
Bruce Seer with Jackland Land Company. Here to address the mayor and the council, on behalf of Jackland Land and Riverbank Commerce Park, and our newest addition, which is the old seed company site. So I want to, one, commend all of you for the city that we have, and, and your relationship with bringing new business in, the economic development desire that you have. But I, secondly, want to double commend you for the way your staff works with, with us as developers, as well as with our tenants and future businesses that come in. In this particular instance, with two businesses we had. One was a relocation, and one was a brand-new company, four-wheel auto parts that you've seen out there, distribution warehouse, as well as a full-sale retail and shop install. But they come from California, they're based out of California, but they have 60-some stores throughout the United States, and 10 distribution centers. This is one of the places that they have been amazed, that, one, we got the project done in a timeframe that they set out early, and then consistently kept delaying us from doing our job, which was trying to get, meet their demands. But we did that, not because they just asked for it, but because it's just part of how we do business in Post Falls. It's how the Jacklins do it. We try to meet the expectations of, of the clients. But it's also what Post Falls wants to do, which is, they did the same thing. We met together, we talked about the challenges, we talked about the issues, we talked about the things that came up as we went along, we flew by the seat of our pants a couple times. But at the end of the day, we didn't say yes every time, and the staff didn't say yes every time, but we all worked together to try to make it work for their benefit, and we think for the city of Post Falls' benefit. So I'm here to tell you, you did a good job in hiring, you did a good job in continuing to work in that philosophy of trying to bring business to Post Falls, and you did a great job in helping us do the same thing with all the tenants we've had in, in Riverbank, but also in the, the new project at the, at the old seed site. So thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate the comments. Thanks for all you folks do as well.
My name is William Vaughn, mayor, city council. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I was excited to hear that the city was considering, or continuing to consider, a sports complex for the youth and adults in our area. There's an extreme benefit and need for that in our area. The benefits to all of the youth organizations, softball, baseball, Little League, Thunder Soccer, Post Falls Junior Tackle, maybe Association of Rugby, which I do not know, lacrosse.
Most people don't. That's why I'm here.
There is a, there's a great need for continuing this. I don't need to stand here and tell you the benefits, the physical and health benefits. From a teacher's standpoint, the benefits to our youth, for our future as a city, is enormous in sport. We learn as youth how to win, and how to lose, how to be teammates. It teaches us incredibly valuable lessons that you cannot get in school. And the place to achieve that is in a competitive field, and the place that this city has provided through their incredible Park and Recreation Department, which I've had the good fortune of coaching many different teams in. I see those benefits. Not only personally, with the return of youth to me, to say their gratitudes, which are received by me, but are entitled to everybody involved in our fields and complexes. I teach through the concept of leadership and service in my classroom, and I cannot find a better place to teach leadership and service than through sport. It is my opinion that a sports complex in Post Falls would have enormous benefits to our community, and would build a stronger constituency, it would build a more valued citizenship. In addition to that, I am obviously aware of financial needs, and we do need to be considerate to how we spend our money, and how we recoup money to the benefits of our city. Traveling through sports events to other cities, and seeing complexes in small towns, even like Sam Point with 7,000 people. The benefit of traveling to that location for, say, a soccer tournament, and how they have been able to utilize their city and their fields to welcome in people from Canada and all over. I think our city would do a better job. We have more to give, more to offer, and more resources. This would be a key component in bringing in valued resources to our city, businesses, hotels, restaurants. I think the list is endless. I appreciate your time this evening, and I look forward to hearing updates and the continued support. I end with one comment, which I think is echoed probably in the room. Sooner is better. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. You're welcome. Mr. Clark?
Mr. Mayor, city council, I come here with the utmost humility. I want to publicly apologize for a comment that was, that was in the paper, oh, probably three weeks or so ago, in regards to the senior center. It was in no ways directed towards the city of Post Falls. You guys have, honestly, I, I think that the city of Post Falls is a model of how a government should be ran. So I thank you for your efficiency, I thank you for your integrity. I hope for your forgiveness. Just know that I, I love this, I love this city, and I will do whatever I need to do to, to help us continue to grow, and, and be a shining, shining place in the state of Idaho, so.
Thanks, Rob. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else? Seeing none? Next item is new business, and now we do have one.
Right. Senior Center.
We're going to talk, Carrie, I would prefer to you.
Well, you did a good job, Shelley, on your, your memo here, but I did have a question on if, so if the senior center were to default, then the building would go back to, would go to Columbia Bank. But how about this? If the senior center defaulted on the loan, what happens with the block grant that is sponsored, being sponsored by the city?
So.
Yeah.
John Cafferty, for the record, want to make sure, make sure I can hang myself before I go out the door.
Last gift, good opportunity.
So what you're saying is, so I understand the question correctly, if they default on the loan with Columbia Bank, what happens with the grant funding?
Right.
For the community development block grant?
Yes.
Um, it would still have to be put to the same purpose, it would probably have to be revisited, the grant through the funding agency, to say, you know, part of the sponsor's assurances would be, standard at least, would be that the improvements will be used for the purpose for which they were funded, and what the grant was applied for, and so you'd have to go back and revisit that. So the potential worst-case scenario would be those grant funds could have to be repaid if there was a default.
Repaid by whom?
By whomever signed off on them. You, because you're the sponsor.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah. And through, well, it would be through, you would have recourse against the senior center, who, under your scenario, is in default and probably is judgment-proof, so yeah, you would be paying it.
And that dollar amount is?
$150,000.
Okay, then. You could answer the question.
Any other questions on that?
Does that scenario change if item L doesn't go through?
I would thank you for giving me that segue. It would be exactly the same if there wasn't a loan. If they default on the terms of the block grant, the same result would be applicable.
So the loan is irrelevant at that?
Um, they could be in compliance with the loan to the bank, but be in default of the grant, and trigger the duty to refund the grant funds. Is another possible scenario. Again, I don't, I don't envision, I don't have any reason to believe that the senior center is prone to default, or is anticipating defaulting, but that's...
Nor do I.
That's a liability that would flow to you as the city, as the sponsor for the grant. Just like any other grant sponsor, you would be responsible for ensuring compliance by the grant recipient.
But approving item L's not going to affect that?
Say that again?
Approving item L on the consent calendar is not going to change that?
No, you would be... No, you would be just as responsible.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the item L, which, and I don't have it in front of me, was the...
Senior Center lease.
Senior Center lease.
I would make that motion.
Second?
Motion second for the discussion. Seen none? Please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Carrie, good question. Thank you. Item number six, ordinances and resolution. We have one ordinance, two resolutions. First is the Smalley Annexation File Ordinance.
Move to place the ordinance on the Smalley Annexation File A-15-01 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second. Motion second for the discussion. Please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Second resolution is a sole source procure, purchase of a modular pump track.
Move to approve the resolution, sole source purchase of the module pump track for, from American Ramp Company, INC.
Second. Motion second for the discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Administrative staff reports?
We have none tonight, sir.
Thank you. Mayor comments? If you may have noticed, flags at City Hall and throughout the country have been floated half-staffed this week honoring the victims of the tragedy in Roseburg, Oregon. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the victims of this terrible tragedy, their families, and the entire community as we all mourn another senseless loss. Also, I wanted to read a letter. As council will recall, I think it was a year ago that we had homeowners in, up at the Highlands that were upset with the chip sealing that had been done the previous year. There was a lot of unhappy folks that expressed their concerns, and they were legitimate concerns. City took steps to, for the, that was two years ago, the work that had been done. Last year, the city took steps to correct the method of application, and they continue it this year. And so, I know there was some contentious comments and discussions that we had with the homeowners up at the Highlands, but I want to read a letter to you. It says, Honorable Mayor Jacobson, council members, City of Post Falls. On behalf of the Highland Park Estates residents, I want to express our appreciation for the projects in our neighborhood completed by the city this year. After bringing it to your attention, the weeds between the sidewalk and curb on Sterling Drive Hill have been eliminated, sealing all the cul-de-sacs, and Inverness Drive by the Street Department was completed and extends the life of them, as well as improving the impairments of our neighborhood. The Highlands is one of the outstanding communities in Post Falls, and our homeowners appreciate the efforts of the city to keep it that way. Very truly yours, David Jensen, HPER president. So, again, we thank him for his letter, and I thank staff, because that was a situation that was not going well. It's been remedied. I've talked with a few of the folks and gone up and looked at it a couple of different times. The streets look much better, so please pass our thanks on the Streets Department. Council comments?
I have one. Last week, Dave Fair and Ryan, there he is, took us again. We started at Kiwanis Park and went way to Corbin with several parks in between, and it was just the most fabulous trip. It was just amazing, and with those two, well, we had three guys, and it was just fabulous. Every, every inch of that trip was just absolutely worth it. We even took the trail, we even rode the trail back home, or back to Post Falls, rode the trail. It was just, thank you, guys, it was just great.
Thank you very much. Carrie?
I have an announcement. I represent the city of Post Falls on the Cootney Metropolitan Planning Organization, and as a committee, we are creating a KCAT team, Cootney County Area Transportation Team. And so, bear with me, it's a small print, but I'm going to try to read it here. But so what we're looking for is people interested, citizens interested in serving on this, it's non-voting members, must be Cootney County residents, 11 members appointed by member agencies, and up to five non-voting members of the public appointed by the KMPO board to represent transportation interests in aviation rail, bicycle and pedestrian, public transportation, trucking, and fire logistics. And so, if any citizens are interested in serving on the Cootney County Area Transportation Team, you can call Glenn Miles, or email kmpo@kmpo.net, or you can contact me, and I'll pass it along. But it's, it's a great organization, and this, as a subcommittee, will make recommendations to KMPO. So, putting that out there for anybody who's got a little bit of extra time and an interest in any of those to join the fun.
Thank you. Who else? We do not need an executive session tonight?
We do.
Next motion would be?
Adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Carrie is meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Stayed trips. Be happy.